City Council, just to remind you, all of you that have been here before, that we ask, since this meeting is actually being recorded for, by McMinnville Community Media, for broadcast on Frontier and Comcast, and actually also being streamed live on the Internet courtesy of KLYC, that we ask that if you have cell phones, that you put them on silent now, and if you have to actually receive or make a call or text, that you go out in the lobby to compensate for the respect of the others in the audience. So, that being said, what I'll do is I will ask Councilor Yoder to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Larry?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor. This is a time that the Council always looks forward to on our schedule, where we ask citizens who might want to address the Council to come forward. There are some things that we will not be able to discuss tonight, and I'd like to go over a couple things with you, is if there's an item that's currently on our agenda, that you wait till that time to come forward and you'll be recognized and be able to talk. If the city's in, in actually a matter of litigation on any topic, we will not be able to discuss that. If the city is setting to do with either a current or existing quasi judicial matter, like a land use matter, we will not be able to discuss that. Or if we know that there's a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we will not be able to discuss that, but hopefully we'll be able to tell you when that public hearing will be, or thereabouts when that public hearing is going to be. And of course, I will limit, if I need to, I'll limit anybody's comments, that length of comments you have to the Council. So that being said, would anybody like to speak to the Council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight, please? Come on, come on forward and then go ahead and, you know, state your name, state your name for the record and sign the piece of paper.
My name's Jim Galba. I live at 524 Southwest Remwood Avenue, here in McMinnville. So, I just wanted to let you guys know, I've applied for a land use compatibility statement for an OLCC production facility in an M2 zone here in town. It's, I guess it's overlapped or overlaid with Gateway District. What do you call that, zoning ordinance? Anyways, I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm gonna, I'm not sure what the right term is, but appeal it or, or ask for a hearing to just see if we can work something out on this particular address on that, it's a zone, it's in the Zone 3.
Yeah. James, just to let you know, that falls into that, since you are going to file that application, it'll come in front of the staff and then the Planning Commission and potentially to the City Council, that is, will become a land use issue. So, in case it's appealed, you decide it goes through the Commission, you appeal to us, we can't actually receive any testimony, other than knowing that you're going to-
Yeah, that's all I'm doing, I'm just making you aware of it, is all, that's, it'll be coming down the pipe.
We'd like to listen, we'd like to listen, but I think just making us aware, it's coming, then it'll be handled by staff and by the Planning Commission before it comes to us.
Fair enough.
I just want to make sure that the Council, based on legal advice, because it will be a land use matter, and we don't want to have to, I guess that the ex parte contact or anything was appealed to us?
Yeah, and, and the issue really is so that you know, nothing said during the Commission meeting tonight will be in the record of that decision, so you couldn't rely upon anything that was said tonight.
No, I'm just making you aware of my intentions, that's all I was doing.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, James. Is anybody else like to speak to the Council on anything that's not on our agenda tonight or any other issue? Okay, one more time, is anybody sure they don't want to speak to us on anything? And if not, we'll move on. Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and move on. Council, in your packet, there were the minutes of the December 8th, 2016, regular meeting and the 2016 Council Dinner Meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Is there any corrections or modifications? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Rudin, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that approval of the minutes by the City Council for the December 8th, 2016, regular meeting and dinner meeting was approved unanimously of those members of the Council present. Thank you, Councilors, that'll take us into new business, and for new business tonight, we have a couple items, new business. And the first one is a historical review of the police activity in the downtown core. We've had some discussions our last few City Council meetings about that, so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Scale. So, Chief, if you would like to bring everybody up to date on where we are and what's being done?
Yes, certainly, and thanks, Mr. Mayor and City Council, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about some historical perspective about what's gone on crime-wise, calls for service-wise downtown. As I mentioned, I want to make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music, when we talk the core area, we're not just talking downtown, we're talking what we've historically defined as the core is First to Fifth, Adams to Irvine, that's where we used to have the enhanced enforcement district. So that's our, that's our neighborhoods that we pulled data from. And during that data pull, we, I opted to use the, the date, year of 2012 comparative to last full year, which is obviously 2015. Now, I think surprisingly, as I shared during our dinner session, calls for service are up in that, in those, in those districts, it was up a total of 38%. Now, calls for service can be anything from an officer being self-initiated and being proactive and going out and contacting people, to a call for service from a citizen. In addition, we identified that we were up 13% with regards to criminal type complaints that our officers handled. Again, the downtown has become busier, it's not, it's not unusual to see that those types of activities are being reported more. It's important to note that during our data pull, we identified some common thread, common themes here, and we identified disturbances are a high call volume, high driver of calls. We've also identified some mental health complaints, persons with mental health issues that we are contacting downtown. Again, fights, disturbances, those types of things. I think with regards to the calls for service, as I said earlier, the officers, I think, are doing a really good job. We identified that they're actively going out and doing bar checks, they're actively going out and field interviewing persons, and we did see a note in, noted increase in self-initiated field activity by our officers, which is important for our citizens to understand that they do want the downtown core area to be as safe as possible for our citizens and business owners. That being said, I think it's important to note that the Police Department does not track or maintain records based on age or financial status, and so we do not keep that track. That would be bias-based profile, which we do not, we do not do. Again, that being said, I think it's important to note that in 2015, the Cooperative Ministries was a high call driver. We were responding there frequently to those types of disturbances, fights, those types of complaints. I also want to stress that Pastor Neres, who's here, has done an admirable job, and I want to say that I think they understand their role within the downtown area, and they're doing things to mitigate as much impact as they, as they have right now. And that's usually through trespassing persons that are not behaving to the code that they've set down at the ministries, and they are being active in contacting our Department for Assistance Withers, for any site sort of disturbance or drug complaints, that sort of thing. So, again, I want to commend them, they are, they are taking the lead in ensuring that they're being good neighbors. So what's the city and the Police Department done? I'm going to probably talk about things that you're already aware of, but I think it's important that the people that are at Council tonight understands that we are trying to stay on top of this through a different, a variety of different methods. Obviously, Jay Pearson's here, and he's been instrumental help along with the MDA in expanding the Park Ranger Program to now include what we call Downtown Ambassadors. They provide extra eyes, they provide some enforcement authority downtown, and they can build rapport with those that are downtown and sometimes causing trouble. They're an extra set of eyes, obviously, in the core, they have the ability to communicate with our officers if they come across something that they're not able to respond to themselves. We also have identified an officer that specifically is responsible for making contact with the churches and the homeless population downtown. He has done a really good job of making daily contacts with those that are downtown, with Pastor Neres, and again, other staff members from different churches, and ensuring that they are abiding by behavioral expectations, that sort of thing. He's kind of a conduit to make sure that our message as law enforcement is, is being abided by by them, and ensuring that they understand the expectations that the officers and the citizens have of them. And in addition, he also serves as a sort of understanding, or not, excuse me, he takes an active role in ensuring that businesses behind Third Street, Geraldys, La Rambla, that sort of thing, that in that public city, that city public space, that they're, that they're, again, trying, that they are abiding by the law as best as we can, again, trying to keep tabs. So that's some things that I think are positive. And lastly, the officer's also been assigned to deal with subjects who are experiencing mental health issues. Our PD has partnered with the Yale County Health and Human Services Department, where this officer is assigned with a COS, which is a community outreach specialist. They will identify persons that are not in mental health crisis, but we believe they're probably leading to that point where they're going to go out there and they're going to actively engage them and try to get them into services, so we can make sure that issues that could potentially pop to, pop up are mitigated prior to it actually becoming a crisis. So I think that's important to note. In addition, as I mentioned during our dinner meeting, and I'll mention to the business owners that might be here, the Police Department also has the ability to sign up businesses for the trespass enforcement agreement, where they can just blanketly say when our business is closed, anybody that's found on the property can be cited and is subject to arrest for the trespass. So, those are some things that we're doing right now. And to those businesses, again, that are here, I think it's important that when the PD and them talk, we talk about crime prevention through environmental design, and there's really three big staples that I think we should convey to the business owners, is that, one, natural surveillance, see and be seen, basically lighting up a business, making sure that it's not attractive to those that want to go in there and cause, and be nuisance or do criminal activity. And also, again, natural access, control of your business. As you recall, the US Bank Plaza did a really good job a couple years ago, that was a problem area for the downtown with persons congregating and causing issues. They went ahead and they set up some natural looking barriers that make it less appealing for those to come and congregate and disturb the businesses. So I think that's important to, to note that, take a look at that. And lastly, the broken window theory, I think everybody's really aware of that, is if, if you, if something's in disrepair, repair it. When you have something that's in disrepair, it sometimes will lead to people that want to come hang out or find it an attractive nuisance, so that's important. Some things moving forward, and I've read many, if not all, of the news registers articles regarding downtown. I want to assure the community that the PD will continue to work towards educating people downtown about respectful and responsible behavior. We know that a vast majority of the people that do go downtown are, do so respectfully. There are those that no matter what we do to try to educate them or provide them with expectations, they're never going to comply. They just are no people, I guess, for lack of a better term. We'll be, we'll do our best, again, to identify them and hold them accountable. And it's important also to note, and I would probably lean to David or City Attorney, that although there are some behavioral, some behaviors that seem criminal, they're not criminal, and that would be such as the cussing, the congregating in public areas, the begging, those are all constitutionally protected actions, activities. We can, although they may bother some persons that are business owners or that walk downtown, those simply are not criminal actions, and we can't help you. We can certainly contact them and FBI them if they are suspicious in nature, and we would do that. But also, I guess finally, the last thing, and I've spoken with a number of businesses, and I've spoken with a number of community members, that it's important that they report what's going on. If we don't know, we can't develop deployment strategies, strategies or strategic plans to help identify where problem areas are. So regardless of the type of activity you see, if we don't know about it, report it. It will get on our radar and it will get our attention, and we will do our best to, to make sure that any type of criminal behavior is, in fact, taken care of. And on that same note, because some of these calls are lower priority calls, they, you will, you will get an officer, it might not be in five minutes, it may be in a half hour, depending upon their calls for service, but at, at any rate, you will get an officer. And so I encourage the businesses and the citizens to make sure that they're reporting all crimes to our dispatch center, or suspicious activity. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, let's start. Larry, do you have any questions, Chief?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Kelly?
Not at this time, thank you.
We'll come back to you, Kevin Allen.
No questions for the Chief.
Okay, Scott?
Chief, a thought that I had was, you know, you had some very good information tonight that I think needs to be a little more widespreadly known in the community. And I've seen that, you know, the viewpoints through the news register sometimes is an area that you can go into greater detail with kind of the report that you had done for us tonight and get it out to the public. I think this was a topic that is a high, it has been heightened, and people are a bit, you know, concerned. And I know as we're putting more of a foot forward with Visit McMinnville, you know, getting our message out, I think that's so important, and that our citizens know what they need to do, to call, to report, and those types of things. So I would just throw out a possibility of, of maybe a viewpoint article could help get that message out.
I would agree, I think education is, is powerful, I believe, getting both sides of it and understanding legally what the officers or the city can do is important for our community to understand moving forward.
Council President Jeffries.
I was kind of shocked to hear that it had gone up so much, I know that 38% is pretty significant. And I think to no surprise to us, we kind of know the reasons why that, why that's happened. But are there any reoccurring players in this that just kind of keep popping up? And could you talk a little bit about that and kind of how we're handling those?
Yeah, I would, again, I would say that we do our best, there are reoccurring themes, especially sometimes around the ministries or just downtown when we're dealing with those that are impaired by alcohol, those types of things. Those are call, again, a call driver right there, where we see somebody that's visibly intoxicated, sleeping in an Alco, that sort of thing, there are those. And I think, I had mentioned the City Manager before, there's a lot of resources that the county has in the court system, and, and I know there was thoughts that, you know, it's a revolving door and that it's cyclical, and that everybody that gets arrested goes to jail, comes out, repeat offender. The county has some, some pretty good programs with reference to, not Veterans Court, but they have Mental Health Court, they've got Drug Court. They're trying to get people plugged into the services that are going to assist them in getting whether it's off drugs or alcohol, whether it's getting them into mental health treatment. And those, so those things are important to know, that although we deal with repeat offenders, the county, through their court system, has done a really good job of broadening their court capacity and how they address criminal behavior, which really is addiction, sometimes behavior, addictive behavior, that they can hopefully intervene and try to plug them in, again, like I said, to those resources that'll help them long-term.
Are we seeing results of that, positive results? I mean, are we going to see another 38%?
You know, I, you know, I would, I would, I would think with, again, when I speak with, for Kathy, and I don't want to, I know, I know she's done a tremendous job of trying to provide expectations, I know their church has just recently gone through how long-term their vision is with, with helping the homeless. Again, we have, I would think that we, our contacts with, whether it's First Baptist or whether it's First Presbyterian, they're all aware of behavioral expectations, I've met with all the pastors at those churches, and I truly believe they will work, which is going to reduce the call volume downtown, because they do see it as important, because they are a part of that neighborhood. So I don't anticipate, again, we think that was 2012 to 2015, that's a pretty big window right there, so you will see some gradual increases, just because downtown has gotten bigger, whether it's through the Alien Days Festival, the, the, remember we have the Drag the Gut Festival, where there is some police contacts that goes on down there. So, keeping that all in mind as, as we move forward, it's not just day-to-day activity, there's also big festivals that the city hosts that are call drivers as well.
Okay, well, I just want you to know that I totally appreciate the work that your, that your team's doing, and recognize the pressures that you're all under, and I just, I think we need to be really prepared for staffing and training and anything we need to do, because I feel, and I don't think McMinnville's that bad at this, but I think nationally we're seeing this more and more, no new trends, it just seems to really spike recently, where the police departments are really being put in a position to manage like a lot more than they were ever intended to, with behavioral and drug addictions and, and, and mental, mental problems. So it's, I just, I just want to make sure that we, don't sugarcoat, don't sugarcoat it for us, and make sure that we are fully aware of the needs that your department has, so that we can address them. And I think too often I see it with the Fire Department, with the Police Department, you guys are just so like, we're gonna, we're gonna do our jobs, we're gonna, we're gonna defend and protect, and, and not really bring forth the complaints or really the concerns so that, you know, I don't want it to become a catastrophic event that sparks change, I want to be, I want to look ahead and see what changes need to be, need to be made.
I would agree, and I will be as candid as I always have been with the call drivers. And I'm worried as, as, I don't want to belive at this point, but I think it's important that we understand that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on public safety, whether fire or the police, and we have to be cognizant of the pressures that our employees are under with the, that these types of calls and the number and the call volume. So, I don't, I guess I'm done crying standing, but thank you for the time, and I appreciate everybody listening.
I have just a couple things, Matt. You know, your data pull, you talked about the end of 2015, and we're basically just kind of starting to come out of winter now, that'll be happening someday, I guess, but what have we seen so far in 2016, though we may not have all the data, what have we seen starting to develop in 2016?
Well, I think, as historically you'll see, we're going to start ramping up in the spring, and I've talked to Jay a little bit, we shared an email conversation about possibly ramping up the Park Ranger Program a little bit, maybe doing some, we have to get ahead of the curve. Historically, we've seen if we're behind the curve, we're going to be playing catch-up, and it's hard to, to get people to conform to expectations downtown when we're trying to chase them, okay? So I know Jay can speak maybe a little bit more about that, but I know, again, disturbances, we're going to see stuff behind Third Street, or excuse me, Second and Third between Baker and Cows. We've met with the business owners, with the City Attorney, Mike and Martha, about some things that they can do, and again, we share crime prevention stuff to make sure that, whether it's they just, they decide to use video surveillance, which will obviously help deter the situation, but we're going to see, again, that the same type of stuff, calls, whether it's disturbances, whether it's just nuisance-type behavior, you will see those. And again, we'll work our, our tails off trying to stay ahead of that and understand, and we'll dedicate, if we need to move that officer that does those specific tasks, if we need to move his hours back to make sure that he's, he's there at the time of need, we will do that. So again, I'm rambling, but I want you to understand that it's going to be the same type of stuff, some disturbances, and again, and nuisance-type behavior.
Okay, my second comment is more of a comment, you know, I'd like to again thank you and the department, but also thank the citizens that are in attendance and the businesses, because I think everybody realizes that it's just not up to city government to take care of this, it's a strategic partnership of the citizens, the churches, the businesses, the city, to make sure that this problem is addressed, and it can't be just left up to the city, it can't be left up to the businesses, it can't be left up to the churches. But one thing I think that's always been wonderful about McMinnville is that when these kind of problems are identified, like we've had the businesses that come to us and individuals, that as a council, we take it very seriously, and I like Kevin's comment about, you know, not sugar, not sugarcoating things, that if there's really a problem that exists there, it's up to us, I'd like to see the city take, like we're doing now, take a leadership role, but it's not just our situation to solve, it's a situation of basically everybody in this room, and if I think if we all work together, we'll, we'll come up with the solution, but there are those things that, but constitutionally and by law, we just can't, we just can't do, even though we'd like to do something. So Matt, thank you, and I'd like to thank everybody in the audience who's been here and testified the last couple meetings we've had on these issues, and believe me, I think we're going to make it better if everybody keeps working as hard at it.
I do too, and real quickly before, I'd like to thank Danielle Zamka's in the back, she did a vast majority of the data pull, and then Captain Dennis Marks really did a good job of compiling that data for us.
It was really important, that's, that's the kind of data I think that means a lot to the Council, when we really see the numbers, it kind of sometimes, emotions are important, but the numbers kind of sometime justify the emotions and take the, just a simple emotional thing out of it, so thank you very much, Matt. Mark, would you like to say something?
Yes, can I say?
Of course, you could say it right there, but you have to state your name so we can hear you.
I'll come up, I'm not-
Okay, well then, yeah, come up, it's, it's open agenda, so come on up. Time's up, Mark, sorry.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I'd like to thank the Chief, I enjoyed the presentation. I mean, there's, there's one thing I'd like to, to be clear, and I think he kind of mentioned it, but it's not only businesses, some of us live in that area, and that, that, you know, we need to be taken into account too, as, you know, as well as the, the businesses downtown. My wife, last year asked the Rangers, I think that's the name of the, them, if they'd be willing to circulate outside of Third Street, and she was told no, that they were told only to be on Third Street. And I noticed that the Chief talked about the whole area, and I really think it would be good if, you know, they kind of came by the Transit Center and, you know, were seen on First and Second Street, maybe even down on Washington Street where I live. But, you know, overall, I think the Mayor's, you know, ending comment there really described it, I mean, it's going to take all of us to solve the issue, and, you know, it's, it's not simple, and, you know, it's probably not totally going to go away either, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and I think that, that comment is well taken, the more bodies we have and the more we can do, it just isn't about the downtown businesses, it's about everybody that lives in that neighborhood. Do, I'll take one more comment, since we're not, JW, come on forward.
I just want as much air as Mark. JW Meligan, 624 Northeast Second. I want to say, you know, since I last spoke here, I really appreciate where this is going. I did meet with Chief Scale, and that was a really good meeting. And what's interesting, actually, since the articles started appearing, it's safer. Something's happened, I don't know what exactly is going on. I also understand that maybe the church isn't doing stuff on Friday and Saturday night, because no one screams at 2:30 in the morning, so the situation's gotten better, but that doesn't mean we let our guard down, keep doing that. And what Mark talked about, I know I've been talking about this, but Sodano elects officers next week, and we will have a homeless action committee to coordinate with the church and the, the police, and we want to, we're looking at it from a holistic type thing, so you're looking at it broadways, not just really narrow. So we are working with you, and I really appreciate where it's going. And it is safer, so it's neat to have, to see things change. I know the newspaper called me the Council gadfly, and I had to look up the definition, I know I hang out around a lot of horses, but I like the definition of a social gladfly, someone who interferes with the status quo of society by, by posting novel, potential, upsetting questions at authority. I think that describes what I do, I like that. But I really appreciate that you guys are taking the leadership, we're all taking the leadership and, and doing something about the behavioral issue, but also look at it completely holistic, so thank you.
Well, I think JW and with your neighborhood association, you know, things, great things happen when somebody takes the lead and everybody feels empowered to do something about it, and I think this is at one of those situations where the citizens are really feeling empowered to take part in the solution, and I think it's going to work out very well, so.
Yeah, it's true, try.
Thank you, JW.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on, riding on, we have a update regarding the sign ordinance amortization requirements, and I'll turn that over to Doug Montgomery, so Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of Council. You may recall that in November of 2008, this Council adopted, adopted McMinnville's first comprehensive sign ordinance. As part of that ordinance, there exists what's called an amortization clause. That clause requires in summary that all non-conforming signs be brought into compliance within eight years of the adoption date of that ordinance, that date then is November of this year. Also included in that clause is a requirement that one year prior to the date of the Council taking action on this amortization clause, that we provide written notice to all affected property owners, by our guess, or estimate, excuse me, that'd be about 160 property owners. So before staff moves into the final steps of that amortization process, we wanted to bring it to your attention and test with you whether you wish us to move forward with that at this time. And with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions the Council may have.
Okay, now, Council, we had some discussions around the dinner meeting, what I'd like to do for the audience and those in attendance, maybe just have each of you that talked a little bit about what we may have discussed at the dinner, I mean, just maybe go over that and review that a little bit. So what I'll do is, I think, Allen, let's go ahead and start, let's go ahead and- So what I'll do is I think, uh, Alan, let's go ahead and start, let's go ahead and start with you.
Yeah, just, uh, in our conversation at dinner, uh, just to start this discussion, it was brought up that, uh, there are those who have complied with the sign ordinance. And then, uh, which we really appreciate, but how do we protect them as opposed to those who have not applied, uh, complied with the ordinance? And where to go from here? So that's, that's a big question in everybody's mind. And so, that's.
Hey, thank you, Alan. Scott?
I think, uh, one of the aspects that we talked about was to, to gather more information without, uh, pushing so much on, on our planning department, scarce resources. But I think as a council, we feel we truly need to get a true picture of where we stand, you know, 160 properties, but where are we? What kinds of signs? What kind of, uh, you know, Doug indicated that many of those could just be, uh, with minimal efforts, come within compliance. And so to know, uh, which ones are close, which ones are far away, uh, I, 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 our feeling was to gather more information before we, start this whole process that, uh, that may be not as large as we think. We want to get a feel for that. So that was one aspect we talked about.
Hey, thank you, Scott. Kelly?
Yeah, I, I think another thing that we discussed, although it's, it's a nice thought to, to bring this enforcement in fairly quickly, uh, after we gather the knowledge. Uh, it may take perhaps a little longer than we originally projected. We think in fairness to the people that have complied, that definitely there should be some form of enforcement. Uh, but it might take maybe anywhere from two to four years to gradually get this enforcement done. Simply be, number one, because of, uh, the resources in the planning department are quite limited and, uh, just to make sure that it's done right.
Hey, thank you, Kelly. Larry?
Yeah, and, uh, and from my perspective, uh, we don't want to create a big uprising among our business people, but yet, to be fair to those who have come into compliance and the new businesses that have gone in, that have had to operate under a different set of rules, we need to keep moving forward on this and not just roll over and ignore it. So, uh, there's, there's, there's a fine line there is to, you know, how hard do we come down and when do we come down versus, you know, you can lay and say, well, they've had, at this point, they've had seven years to think about it. Uh, so how much time do they really need? Or do they just need to know that they're up against a deadline before they make their move? So somehow we got to get to that point where it is workable for both sides.
Good point. Kevin?
Um, I, I really agree with a lot of what was said and especially with what, um, Councilor Yoder had said that we need to, we need to bring people into compliance. It's the reason why we have these laws. And I think seven years is a very generous amount of time. Um, you know, working with the state regulatory bodies, we, we don't give them that long, ever, for, for companies to come into compliance. Uh, but I, I do realize that there are some, uh, some big legal battles that we could be facing, um, if we were to just kind of, you know, push really hard on this. And I think we need to take, take that into consideration. And let David do some research and get back to us quickly because I think the more time we, we, we spend on not taking action, the weaker that ordinance gets. But I, I think it's gonna be important for us to know, uh, kind of what's the, the legal, uh, horizon look like if we were, let's take the example of the billboards. If we're, if we're to force us into compliance, there would no longer be billboards. Um, the value of those would be significantly impacted. And I think, I think we know that those types of properties can be very litigious. And so we need to be careful with that. And maybe we need to rewrite the law to something that is more, more palatable both for us politically as well as the, um, the business environment that we have here in McMinnville. So I would, you know, really like to see, uh, some more legal briefs on this.
I have to agree with, I think everything all the counselors said. I think we're facing a couple of different issues. We're facing the issue of when do they come into compliance and the effort by the business, uh, community to come into compliance. But we also face the issue that once we send out the letters, uh, giving them until November to come into compliance. And if they don't, then cite them into Muni Court, into municipal court. And then look at what we might have to do, whether, uh, the potential of, since the ordinance was done after, a lot of those signs put up, our city attorney told us, the potential that maybe those would, some of those might be considered a taking. Um, and so I think I feel very comfortable that we should move forward, but we should do so cautiously and, and maybe if it's just a matter of sending out letters saying that we're going to potentially begin the process, but we don't really do anything until we get a good feel from our city attorney. Um, you know, what it's, what, what the pros and cons are doing so. And then also from our city manager and everything to give us a, and, and Doug's group, to give us a good idea on what is the resources that it's gonna take to get that. And if we start bringing them into compliance, where do we break that line? Say, we're gonna bring them to compliance now, but, you know, knowing it's gonna take three or four years potentially to get through the whole list of them, I'd rather do that than just kind of really let it go at all. Um, because I can tell you, business owners, I'm sure there's a lot of business owners over there that were aware of it, but let, over seven years, that's a long time. And when you're worried about running a business and worrying about all the other things you have to do, that that might be something that just might not be on your mind. But I think we have to put it back on their mind and make sure that they know that we're gonna move forward. So what I, I think if it's consensus of the council, I think, um, I'd like to see if, uh, if we want to have David, have our city attorney start putting together some things and Martha, uh, putting things together. So we know what the impact, how many signs, I take a little compliance, how many signs are a lot? And then what impact and when do we start this? But to me, that means, do we put off doing the letter or, you know, where do we stand till after we get that information? So what's the consensus, Alan?
Well, just another bit of information, I think is good for everybody to understand is, uh, the planning department is doing a great job of making sure that everything that is coming new is in basically 100% compliance as it's gone through the planning department. So there is progress being made on that and, uh, and even changes of ownership. I'm not sure where that stands. You have anything on that, Doug?
No, uh, Councilor is correct. As signs come through for permit today, they certainly are required to comply with a set of standards that were adopted in November of 2008. Uh, the other triggers are, uh, a sign needs to come into compliance if there is significant change, structural change to that, uh, sign itself. But ownership does not trigger a change, nor would the simple change out of a face on a sign trigger a change to that sign.
Doug, how about a change in usage, in type of usage of the building?
That does not either. I, I think the difficulty there is that we would have a very uneven way of enforcing that given we don't have a business license program or some other means or vehicle to track, uh, change of use or change of ownership.
Okay, so Alan, go ahead.
Uh, just under, um, how about on a major remodel of an existing business that's, has a non-conforming plan, needs a building permit, or a non-complying sign? Um, is that, is there, uh, a way to enforce it at that point?
Under the current standard, the answer would be no, unless they do touch the sign in some way.
So the sign itself has to be altered or?
Correct.
Some way?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, any more questions around, so what's the consensus of the council as far as sending the initial letters and then how we'd like to proceed? I don't think we need about, we just need to give, uh, give the staff a consensus on it. Would you, Kelly?
I think it wouldn't be bad to give notice if we know specifically who needs the notice. Uh, and just say, and, and again, I defer to the planning department because they probably know better than anyone. But it seems to me like if we are gonna begin a process and there is going to be some form of enforcement action, it might not be a bad idea to just say, hey, that time limit's up and we're gonna start talking to you about it.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, I agree with that, but, uh, also with, uh, the more information from our city attorney.
Oh, absolutely, more information.
Well, I can sense this and we can have Dave, go ahead.
I mean, if, if, if we could hold off for 30 days and, and make sure that we've got a solid, solid footing and plan for how we would handle the enforcement before sending off the letters.
And also the wording of the letter and, okay, I think what we'll do is then we'll just direct, uh, the city attorney and the city manager and, and the planning director to actually work that out and, and hold off to send those letters until they feel comfortable, we know are doing so. If that's, that's the case, I think, uh, the staff now has the direction, Martha, and where we want to go with that.
And what we could do is, is we could come back April 12th.
March, April, that's, that's two weeks, yeah.
So.
Either the first or the second week in April. I do, what I don't want to do with everything you're doing is cut staff short. So even if we do it the second weekend, the second meeting in April, because I don't want to compound. Something I'd rather give time allow it be done and be done right and so.
So the 26th of April?
We'll shoot for April in there and then we'll go with justice schedule, let's get it in there.
Yep. Doug?
Go ahead, Dave.
12th is a good goal, 26th is a good goal.
I think, Mr. Mayor, there are at least two issues I can think of. One is the legal underpinnings for this to occur. The other is just the, uh, fact that we need to go out and re-inventory what the landscape is now, eight years after this ordinance was put in place, the last time we did, uh, complete inventory of the signs.
So Doug, as a part of that inventory, taking a picture of the sign and having a picture, uh, for each of, each of the businesses?
That was our practice, uh, back in, uh, 2009 when we first advised property, property owners of their situation. We sent a letter and then attached to it, the, a picture of the actual signs that were in question. And that'd be the same this time too. So we need to update that inventory.
Yeah, and that's why I think maybe the second meeting in April gives them a little bit more time to do that. So, but we'll, we'll shoot for April, whatever staff feels is appropriate and do, do that. So do we have anything more we want to talk about on that particular issue? No, thanks for the great report. Uh, Doug, it's hard to believe that we were talking about the same issue eight years ago now, but it's been great. Okay, thank you, Doug. Uh, thank you, counselors, for that great con, conversation and discussion. We'll move forward with that. Counselors, on our, um, agenda tonight, we do have two resolutions. Our first resolution is 2016-11. And what that does is provides for a fee schedule, allows the fire department to recover costs for services allowed with the international fire code adopted by the state of Oregon. And we got a little report at dinner, but Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor and counselors, um, within the municipal code currently, uh, there are ordinances that allow for the, the, uh, enforcement of the, the fire code and the adoption of the fire code, uh, as the, the most current one that is acceptable by the state. Um, within that, uh, international fire code, there is a section that allows for fees to be charged for permits and, and a fee schedule developed, uh, associated with that. Um, historically, Chief McDermott and her staff have, uh, worked very hard on, um, uh, on educating, uh, the, the citizens and, and the businesses and, and the folks that we work with on, on a routine basis in our prevention division. But we have, uh, issues out there that are, that are non-compliant and we don't have any method to, to deal with those issues. We also have issues out there where permits would help us, uh, under, understand better what's going on, uh, in, in the field, in particular with, with some of the, um, the issues that, that we're dealing with on whether they're illegal burns or those types of, of things, or firework stands, or large events that require a significant amount of planning, uh, from our department, uh, to, to support those events. So this fee schedule, uh, is a method, um, to try and, and help assist with those costs associated with staff time to deal with those things that either are, uh, repeat offenders that are not getting compliance or, or significant time, um, uh, require, that require the prevention staff.
Uh, council, just so you know, as part of my discussions with the, uh, chief, what I, what I suggested is that if the council adopts this resolution, that as a follow-on to this resolution after it's implemented, is that we have staff, go back over a, whatever period of time it takes and look at the old ordinances and the old resolutions and clean those up and see which ones can go away, what other wording can be included in another version of this to do some really cleanup so we don't have conflicting ordinances or conflicting resolutions.
The ordinances that we currently have, just so you're aware, have the same language, uh, the, the resolution has the same language. So we're not conflicting with another one currently, but the cleanup absolutely, the goal was to try and get it for the citizens' access, a one-stop shop where we have the, all the fees listed. Uh, make it easier access and easier understanding and education of the, of the process.
Okay, thank you, chief. And Debbie, thank you for working on, on this. I think the only other question I had, that I brought up to the chief about is as I went through this, and I agree with every one of the standbys and everything, I, it kind of like almost talking, the sign ordinances we have on the, uh, reinspection for the inspection violations, that we basically have four inspections before they're cited into, uh, court. I'm not so sure if they don't do it by three, that the fourth would really do us any good. So Debbie, um, because I know it says on the schedule that after the four, the fourth goes, third is $200, the fourth is $400, and then it's cited to Muni Court. That I'm not so sure that if they don't have three, if we shouldn't take them or, you know, I'm not so sure. Is there a reason, do other jurisdictions have four or is it that pretty common?
Uh, I think that our goal, it really is to go out and educate, this is why you need to comply. And then have a resource if they don't, um, that gives them, you know, they're, they'll get their first inspection and reinspection, then non-compliance is the first charge. And then we thought, we give them the opportunity to clean it up then if they don't. That fourth inspection is really what triggers the, I mean, there's a fee associated to both. Um, we thought, well, we should probably give them that 30 days after they get hit with that first fee to clean it up and then move from there. And also with that, so you guys have understanding is that if someone says, hey, that's gonna be expensive and it's gonna take me five months to implement putting in whatever system that's now required, we wouldn't assess a fee for taking longer than necessary.
Okay, so really if they just decided they weren't gonna do it, I think that's what's, before they'd be cited, 700, the 100, is it 102 and four?
Correct. 102 and four.
So it'd be $700 in fines before they were cited. In that case, I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to the, to the fourth inspection, if it makes sense to give them that extra time to do that, I'm.
And we have, Mr. Mayor, we have two components. One is our, our role is really not to tie up Muni Court with a lot of our, our issues. They're busy doing a lot of other things. Um, so our goal is really to try and educate them. And I think once the, the, the business owners understand that there actually might be a fee associated with, uh, failing to follow through with, um, corrective measures, that we'll probably have a lot less of those. Uh, we're, we're not, we're not projecting this to be a revenue driver. We're not trying to, we're not trying to create dollars. This is really more of, of an enforcement tool, uh, if education doesn't work.
And that was my comment, what was the real difference between having three and, three and four? You know, because I believe, definitely believe in the education is the driver. And like Chief McDermott said, you know, the whole process, if they're, if they're making the effort and they're implementing something, but it would take a while to implement that, as long as they're going through the process of implementing that and don't get fined, I think that's the best, that's part of that educational process too, so.
You'll note down into the burning sections, um, we have, uh, challenges with, um, enforcement of illegal burns. And, and while DEQ, um, is the authority having jurisdiction, um, rarely do they get involved, uh, in, and, and they defer, even at the state level, to the local fire jurisdictions to be their enforcement tool. Um, but without having the DEQ
Right.
backing, we don't have the mechanism to deal with some of those issues. And, and just to be quite frank, our goal isn't to, uh, if someone burns on a day that wasn't a burn day, turn it out and give them a fee. Uh, we're gonna go out and do what we do currently. You, you need to not be, today's not a burn day, you need to put it out. Our challenge becomes when, when we go out to someone who's burning something illegally, a significant health hazard, um, and, and they're, they're not compliant. And then they're not willing to comply, that gives us a little bit of an advantage, uh, to let them know that this, if, if we're gonna have to put this out for you, there's gonna be a significant added expense to the, to the process.
Okay, any more questions, uh, Larry? Questions for, uh, Chief Rich?
Nope, I think I understand.
How about Kelly?
No.
Kevin?
Uh, just a, more of a, uh, an editing question. So on the actual form with this, the different fee schedule?
Yes, sir.
Under general violation fees, there's firework permits and event permits that are italicized, italicized but not bold. So it kind of reads like they're under the general fees. I'm just wondering if that was intentional or should they also be bold to kind of make them their own category?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They're in a talents?
Yeah, but they're not.
Oh, instead of, uh, instead of, I see what you're saying.
That just looks like a clean.
Yes, we clean that up.
As well, we'll, we'll, we'll clean it up.
I clean it up, yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think so.
Does this also mean I can have a firework show in my backyard if I pay you $100? Does this also mean I can have a firework show in my backyard if I pay you $100?
Absolutely not.
It's going to cost you, Kevin, if you have a mishap.
If there are ground blooms and they don't launch into the air, you know, we can talk. Okay.
Okay. Alan, any comments for you?
No, none at all. Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
And then, Chief, just one clarification under the standby fees. It looks to me that if there's a vehicle accident and the fire department comes out, if it's a residence, a city, a residence within the city limit, then there's no charge. But if it's a non-resident, there's a charge?
That's correct, sir.
That goes to the insurance company?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And the reason behind that is because when Measure 49 and 50 were passed, those responses were classed as tax obligation responses, and the non-resident ones were not. And that's the one that is actually in ordinance already.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, if no more questions, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2016-11.
So moved.
We have a so moved by Counsel Rudin and a second by Counsel Manke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution 2016-11, providing for a fee schedule that allows the fire department to recover costs of services allowed within the International Fire Code and as adopted by the state of Oregon, passes the council unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
That'll take us on to our second resolution. Our second resolution tonight is Resolution 2016-12, and that's a resolution awarding the contract for the Cook School Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and that's City McMinnville Project 2014-9. 2014-9, wow, Mike, already. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Bissett, and Mike, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief memorandum that's in your packet, as well as the draft resolution and a project vicinity map. This project is located in the area surrounding the former Cook School Elementary Site. It continues our efforts to remove inflow and infiltration of rainwater and groundwater out of your sanitary sewer system. At the completion of the sewer work, it also includes repaving of several of the streets within the neighborhood using a combination of the transportation bond dollars and the state's allocation of, the city's allocation of state gas tax dollars. We received four bids for this project. The bid from Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group was the lowest responsible and responsive bid. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing and awarding the contract to Emery &amp; Sons in the amount of $2,653,000, or $653,513.
Okay, Michael, just a couple of questions. First question is, is this is our fifth, which basin, which project, I&amp;I project is this now? How many have we done? This is our sixth?
Actually, we've been doing I&amp;I reduction projects since the late 90s, at the same time you built the new treatment plant, which is now 20 years old. We've spent millions of dollars within the sanitary sewer system to remove groundwater and rainwater out of the system. There's a small portion of this basin that has a combined system where the storm water is piped directly to the sanitary. We'll remove that as part of this project. We have another, several years, another 10 years or so of I&amp;I reduction projects ahead of us that are contained in the city's adopted wastewater capital plan. Overall, we have a goal of reducing I&amp;I in the system by an additional 35%. That helps limit the size of the treatment plant and at the same time replaces an aging pipe asset that you have within the sanitary sewer system, so.
Okay, thank you, Michael. And Emery, they've done projects for us before, the responsive bidder, the one that you're recommending?
Emery &amp; Sons has not done sanitary sewer work for us in the past, but they meet all of the requirements to receive a public works contract per the requirements that are set forth by the state.
Hey, thank you, Michael. Any questions? Let's start, Alan or Scott? Either one of you have questions?
Just for some info, Mike, so the I&amp;I project is to eliminate as much as possible excess water getting into the sewage lines and going to the sewage plant. So on a storm event, what, a major storm event, what kind of impact does that have on our possible overflows into the Amhill River and so on and so forth? What, can you lend some info on that?
Currently, during the summer, what we call our average dry weather flow is about four to four and a half million gallons a day. Our sewer treatment plant for winter flows is built to handle 32 million gallons a day, and there are times during the winter where we reach that flow of 32 million gallons. For the past several years, we've not had sewer overflows until the December storms, and we did have, like many of the communities within the valley, sanitary sewer overflows. Of course, those are quite diluted with the amount of rainwater and groundwater that's entering the system. But the foundation of the wastewater capital plan that the city adopted in 2010 was continuing to remove water out of the system so that we didn't have to expand the plant beyond the 32 million gallon capacity that we have. We've recently, very recently, completed the third train of treatment, the expansion project at the treatment plant that will help us with winter flows. In the past, we've had what's known as blending, where you blend flows that have been completely treated with flows that aren't completely treated. That's allowed under our permit. With the completion of this phase of the work, we're no longer blending. We're one of the few plants within the state and within the country that no longer need to blend, so we're ahead of the curve on that. Anyway, a long answer to your short question, but it's been a very lengthy process over the past couple of decades. We have work ahead of us, but I think we're making significant progress. In fact, you awarded a contract last fall for us to measure flows within the sewer system, and we've been doing that. Within the next couple of months, we'll have some results for you that we'll be able to show. We monitor flows when we adopted the plan in the late 2000s, 2008 timeframe. We'll be able to show how much progress we've made in the intervening eight to 10 years. So stay tuned for that.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Scott?
And Mike, you know, I appreciate the priority that we're getting into these storm separation areas and being able to take care of those. The other thing I appreciate is as we do this, and we're going to be able to go into a neighborhood that is pretty high density, that hasn't had roads looked at for a while, and between, you know, our bond measure and our gas tax, go in and make this a much more livable area for those in that area, an area that maybe had been overlooked. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. Kevin?
Could you describe a little bit of the process and how we work with the homeowners in those areas where we're disconnecting their storm drains from the sewer?
So it's a fairly lengthy process that starts early in the design. We'll go out, we'll identify a project area, we'll notice the entire neighborhood, and then we'll go out and we'll investigate and try to find what's connected to the sanitary sewer system, where it's leaking, where perhaps storm drains are connected. And then we use that to drive the design, whether we need to dig and replace the pipe, whether we can line the existing pipes, or whether in some cases, you do what's called pipe bursting, and you pull a new pipe in. At the same time, we do those rehabs of the public system. We'll take a look at all of the private sewer laterals as we go, TV them, and then we'll assess those laterals and those that are leaking and have deficiencies. We'll get a notice to the property owner that they need to upgrade their private sewer lateral post-completion of the project so that they're reducing their amount of inflow and infiltration that's reaching the system. We're sort of unique in our approach. McMinnville's been doing this for 20 years or so, as I've mentioned. When we first originally did the wastewater studies that determined we needed a new treatment plan, and Mr. Davis can kind of testify to this as much as I can, much of the problem that we're finding with the flows that enter the system during a rainfall event, approximately anywhere from 40% to 60% of that problem comes from the private connections to the public main. So the public is investing through rates a significant amount of money, millions of dollars, into the public sewer system. And the policymakers that came before us said that if we're going to fix the public system, we need to also address the private system. And so that's why we have a very aggressive program to assess the private laterals at the same time we do the public work, and we ask that the property owners fix the problems that are on private property, so.
So do we disconnect those, if we know that there's a rain drain that goes directly into the sewer, do we disconnect it, or do we just hope that they will take the initiative to do it? Because it's quite expensive to do it.
So the property owner will get a notice that they either have a connection that doesn't meet the code, or they have a pipe that doesn't meet the code, and they're asked to fix that. And if they do that within a certain timeframe, the city provides an incentive, it's a 10% incentive, to their cost, that they get a rebate from the city for addressing that within a timeframe. Some folks aren't able to do that, and so they're given a full year to do the repair. And those folks that don't comply within the year's timeframe start accruing a penalty that's assessed against them until they do the repair. We've done, and these numbers, I'll give you an approximate number, we've probably done 1,200 to 1,400 lateral assessments over the period we've been doing I&amp;I reduction work. And we have a handful, you can count them on one hand, of folks that have not complied with the requirements to upgrade, those that needed upgrading, to upgrade their pipes. So it's been a very successful program. Much like many things in McMinnville, our citizens have stepped up and said that we understand that we need to do this to help address the problem.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Is there a discussion of perhaps a rain tax in the future or something like that?
Completely, completely different system. Our storm sewer system is an unfunded piece of city infrastructure, where we have separate storm systems, which is most of our city now, where we have a sanitary sewer system that drains to the treatment plant and a storm system that drains either to our creeks or to the river. That storm system eventually will come under federal and state permitting requirements. We're not there yet. When they adopt new standards for the Amhill River, TMDLs are called, Total Maximum Daily Loads, that will likely include storm discharge requirements as well. And as a community, we'll need to address what's leaving those storm pipes and entering our creeks and river, and we'll have to solve that together because there currently isn't a funding stream to address storm system issues.
On the private properties, when you're addressing they're having an issue, does that go on the property as a lien at some point?
It does, and there have been a number of these that when the property has sold, the new owner gets notice that they have a problem with their sewer lateral, and we start the process over again with the new owner. So they don't accrue the penalties or fees that have been assessed. But that process with the lien does allow somebody that's purchasing property to know that there's an issue with their pipe. We've also, over time, worked with realtors, a lot of the local realtors, to help them understand our program. And we'll get a lot of calls from folks that, either realtors or potential homeowners, that are looking at homes in our, some of our older neighborhoods, wanting to know if those pipes have been upgraded already.
Wonderful to hear you have an education program. That's great.
Larry?
Thank you.
My questions have all been answered, basically, but I just want to commend the department for staying on top of this, and I like, I'm glad that we're on the progressive side of this issue to keep it under control. It makes me proud to be a part of this city.
And I'd like to echo that, Mike. You know, we always, we're very fortunate, McMinnville. We always hear about the things about our good economic development and our good tourism industry and our restaurants. But it's really nice to know that everything we hear just isn't above the ground, you know, that we're leading the nation, and we're doing a lot of things that other cities, as you said earlier, in the nation haven't done yet or haven't thinking. So we're taking care of that part, and I think all of it has to come in together. And I think you and your staff, and then the wastewater treatment staff and public works, they all need to be really commended on the job you guys are doing. And especially the way you work with the general public and our citizens to resolve those issues. I've only heard nothing but great, great comments. So thank you very much. So that being said, Counsel, we do have a resolution in front of us, 2016-12, and that's a resolution awarding the contract for the Cook School Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and that's City McMinnville Project 2014-9. So I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Yoder, seconded by Counsel President Jeffries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let the record show that Resolution Number 2016-12, a resolution awarding the contract for the Cook School Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, which is our project 2014-9, passed the council unanimously. Counselors, that takes us into our advice and information items, and since we do have an urban renewal, short urban renewal meeting tonight, I'll entertain from any of the councilors if they have anything specific they do want to report on, any of the committees they're assigned to. None? If not, the only thing I'll bring up is on the bypass is yesterday I went to a presentation in the city of Newburgh, and the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde, who are definitely a great partner for all the cities and the county, in Amhill County, presented the director of the Department of Transportation, Matt Garrett, and the Area Two Director of the Oregon Department of Transportation, a check for $4 million, to go for their portion of the local funding of the bypass. And if you haven't been over in the Newburgh, South Newburgh area, around Wynuski Street, in the old publisher's paper, I'd encourage you to do so because it's really making great progress, really making great progress. So, yes, Scott?
And I have one thing. Community Traces met last week, and we had an opportunity to look at our new website and see it live. And I think we're moving towards the end of April, Martha, that that's going to be live, and it really is functioning the way that, as a council, we've wanted it to look and function.
Will that link go out to the council before we go live for us to look at? Thank you, Martha. Any other things? If not, do, is there any important department reports you guys would like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, then what I will do is at this time, in your packet was the cash and investment report of December 2015, and with that, I'll adjourn the regular city council meeting. And we'll give everybody a chance that may want to leave. They can do, they can do so. And I've got to get, yeah, I've got to stay, Alan, I'm sorry. And that will take us into, Counsel, that'll take us in tonight. We don't have a lot of business tonight, so what I'll do is I will call to order the March 8, 2016, meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, which, as the council, we are the Urban Renewal Agency. And the first thing on our agenda tonight is the minutes of the December 8, 2015 Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? And if so, I'll entertain a motion that the Urban Renewal Agency accept the minutes of the December 8, 2015 meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show the minutes of the December 8, 2015 Urban Renewal Agency meeting have been approved. We do have one area of new business tonight, and that's the appointment of an ex-officio member to the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. And Doug, or you and Martha, who wants to handle, you want to handle that, Doug?
I guess I am. Mr. Mayor, as you may know, the membership on the McMinnville Downtown, excuse me, the MURAC group includes three ex-officio members, one representing the city council, which is currently held by Mr. Hill, one representing the McMinnville Downtown Association, and then finally, one representing McMinnville Water and Light. With Cassie Sellers' recent retirement, we now have a vacancy in that ex-officio member that represents the Downtown Association. You have before you a recommendation from the MDA, as well as from MURAC, to appoint Rebecca Quant, who is the new executive director for the MDA, to fill that position. Our recommendation is that by motion, you accept that recommendation and appoint Rebecca Quant as an ex-officio member to the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Any questions from the council?
I can tell you, being on the board, unanimous support. Rebecca brings a lot of education, a lot of experience, and is just a welcome member of that advisory committee.
Yep, she's a welcome member of the whole city. I mean, she does a great job. So hearing none, then I will entertain a motion that we appoint Rebecca Quant to the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Yoder, seconded by Counsel Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the appointment has been made, and tell Rebecca thank you for us, Doug, and taking part. We're going to miss Cassie, but we're really fortunate to have somebody, Rebecca, to come and sit on the committee. Is there anything else to come in front of the Urban Renewal Agency? Doug, do you have anything else to come in front of us? Tonight, Martha, would you like to have, have anything you'd like to bring in front of us?
Just one thing, going back to the council, is on March 22, with all this talk of wastewater and sewer, I would invite everybody out at 5 o'clock as we get big, giant golden scissors, and we're going to cut a big, giant red ribbon as we finish up and do, say some really good words about everything that's happened over there at the expansion of wastewater.
Okay, you want to make sure that gets out to all, if you have an already to all the councilors?
It's already, it's already in your box.
It's probably already, it's probably already on my calendar, then. Okay, that being said, if there's no more business, I'll adjourn the March 8 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And that being said, we are completed for the evening.